We're ready. All this meeting order of the Potawatomi County Board of County Commissioners, Monday, October 19th, 2020, 10 o'clock, roll call please.
Mr. Sackhouse.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We do have a forum. Call stand, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day, thank you for leaders of this city, this county, and this state. Lord, we ask that you be with everybody, not just today, but throughout this time that we meet, be with the leaders of this country. Lord, be with each one of those who have had this crazy disease, and put your hands on all of us who are trying to bear from it. Lord, we ask that you walk with us in our daily life, not just in work, not just as leaders, but be with us and help us to do your will. We ask these things in your precious name, amen. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a lot of guests today. So, let's just start, Alex, with you. We know you, but they may not, so let's start with you and just tell everybody your name and who you're with.
Absolutely, I'm Alex Loon, I'm a reporter with the County Wides and Southern. A moderator of your hobbies, there you go. I enjoy fishing.
Very much so.
Yes, very much so. Weekend, every weekend activity.
Me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm Adam Ewing, I'm with the Standard, and my hobbies are coming to county commissioners.
And thank you for YouTube.
Absolutely. Check it out on YouTube.
Yeah.
Hi. You don't want to skip me, but Alicia Ward, Ontario, I'm with Potawatomi County Public Safety Center.
All right. Stephanie, you're at Potawatomi County Public Safety Center. Thank you, Bateman, what is it?
Well, Morris, I'm just here to ask you questions.
All right.
Dustin Richardson, our male deputy.
Governor Cawthorn, I work for veterans, and that's my hobby also.
Andy Starkin with Shawnee Fire Department.
Danny Turner with Shawnee Fire Department. Steve Campbell with Shawnee Fire Department.
Al Brody, you with zone.
How you spell your last name?
D R K S.
It's like a Sam.
Well, Wendell, I'm with the Zone Book. Thanks, Alfred, you're serving.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, everybody.
Lady man, Jimmy Burr.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I enjoy long walks in the park.
That's sweet.
No, he don't walk anywhere. Make it known to that.
And for the record, that's advice. That's funny. All right, well, welcome, everybody. Oh, we all have to mask up, but it is what it is right now. So, let's do number five, update from Public Safety Center.
That is me. We do, our current inmate count is 356. We have 298 males, 58 females, and out of those, I can tell you, we've had five positive programs. In the past week, we had 82 bookends, 83 released, one inmate on safety observations, zero medical ORs, 29 notice of JNS, one JNS, zero DOC revocations, 14 outside transports, not including court, one after-hours transport, 74 video court, and zero to outside court. The only major repair we've had this week is from what was in it with our food.
And our food?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Number six, update from environmental deputy.
I had a, I cleaned up two different websites, I had a third one reported that I need to get to work on. I wrote a ticket for open burning after a lady had thrown trash out her back door, said 20 cars on fire. And I'm waiting for Q on that one, and I worked with them on a spill down here, it's like road.
We put dirt on that. Have you been out there?
I haven't. I got dirt.
But let me know if we need to do any more. I spoke with Mr. Garrison, and I told him we would take care of that and do that, and we did that very next morning. So, but if it's not good enough.
I don't know what it looks like, it's a little moist on.
Yeah, okay. All right, are you gonna go look at it then, or you don't mean have my foreman look at it, or?
I'll go either.
Okay, good, good, thank you. And thanks for helping that weekend, too. I gave you kudos last week. All right, thank you. Number seven, consideration action regarding opening and awarding of water tender fabrication for Maude Fire Department. All they received was a no bid from J&amp;J Custom Fire. That's a water tender fabrication.
I agree.
It's a water tender.
No one did it, thank you.
What do you think, Steve? They are bidding on people, and they've just been on it. No, was that so?
I was told they had questions, and they weren't able to get ahold of somebody, and so when Paul and I discussed earlier, he said they might have to redid it, because they didn't get the questions answered that they needed. And that's just what I, that was the whole purpose, actually, in the asking questions, because I'm not gonna say that we're gonna have to redo it if they purchase one, correct? Okay? Thank you. Number eight, consideration and action regarding approving the Compton Public Schools to utilize $75,000 of sales tax funds to pay for the school farm project. And let's note that that is that education fund that we, yes, that was passed through the. And I done. They did bid the project, and then I think the total bid, and Mr. Penney's here with us, was over $200,000. With Zoom, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. And there were requests for $75,000.
Do you want me to be on Zoom this morning? Hopefully you can hear me okay.
We can.
We can.
Good morning.
So, G-Man, can you hear us?
He can't hear us.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, there you go.
I can hear.
G-Man Custom Barns was the, was the vendor, is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am, that's right. That would be our little bidder. I've included there all of our bidding process, and the bidding packets for the vendors who did do that, we went through that process in the spring. But now we're ready to move forward. The total cost of the facility construction, right now, we have it at $365,057. We're using different funds to pay for that, we're asking the use of $75,000 through our sales tax funds to pay for part of that construction.
Is this the radio building they were talking about?
This will be an ag barn that will primarily house our slime projects. So, it's gonna be on a property that we own that's to the west of our high school campus.
Okay, I don't have a problem. I have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you, you all too. Thank you so much.
Number nine, consideration and action regarding minutes of October the 13th. For the record, that's Justin Bieber, that's my fault. Thought his last name was Bieber. We'll change it, it's Bieber. Bieber.
Bieber.
Yeah, I misunderstood him myself, so that's my fault.
I'll make a motion for the minutes of October 14th.
And I will. Second, roll call. Mr. Sackhouse.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thomas.
I'm right here.
Yes, ma'am. Number 10, consideration action regarding transfers of appropriation. I do have that. Consideration and action regarding blanket purchase orders, and I've added one for some rock to Martin Marietta, and then one for Colonnade. We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, number 12, consideration action regarding salary resolution. Okay, you have that in front of you. And we also have your, our base formula, which is based on our population, our tax, our meal rate. The statute allow for us, all the elected officials, to make a minimum or maximum. And our minimum, our maximum right now is 57,462.50. With the new law that went into effect, there's a, they redid the formula, so now the total maximum rate is 59,862.50, which is a difference of $2,400 a year, which is $200 a month. Now, with all that being said, and the resolution states every bit of that, it states the minimum, it states the maximum, it states the increase, and it states how much it is a month. But, the only thing that I'm pondering about is the fact that there are some commissioners who think we can do this immediately, and then there's others who think we have to wait until January 2021. So, I didn't get with you ahead of time, and I called the auditor Thursday or Friday, I don't remember, and then I called again this morning. I haven't got a call or text back. So, my suggestion is we table this until we get a definite. I'm not worried about the formulas and the amount, that's been, that's been okay. I'm, I'm just cautious of the start date.
With my back turned?
Yeah, with your back turned.
That's closed communication.
So. So, I know that the other elected officials are, I mean, kind of wondering about it, Michelle had said, so, I mean, I don't really want to take action. I was okay up until last week, because I thought we could, but like I said, I'm not for sure. I'll give you a copy of this, you know, the way you can look at it. Yeah, yeah, just. What will? Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it has to be done by resolution, and I wasn't for sure what the resolution had to say, so I got, I had another county send me the things they use. So, anyway, the language is basically the obvious, so, okay. And with that being said, and I'm just throwing this out there, this formula will change again in January anyway, because our population will change. So, that may be something to think about. I'm not, I mean, I'm not for doing one now and doing one again in January, but that's between all of us, I guess, at that time, but just note it yourself, that formula, population will change again. Right now, it's at 69,422, and that population will increase from January. Yeah, and I don't know when that comes out, but I thought it was anywhere around January, February is the latest, isn't it? But that will, that will change, so just, I'll stay on top of it. We'll get it. Hard work is typing all the resolution, but getting all the formulas right, so. So, we'll take no action, if that's okay, and move on down. Number 13, consideration and action regarding approval of funding agreement at Rock Creek Bridge, project number three, J3-44694 in the Ho, CI. That's mine, that is off of Gearsway Road, that little bridge there that floods every time, we have a heavy, large, fast rain, and so it's on my, pardon my serve, and this is the funding agreement. For rideaways and utilities and. Have a motion and a second, roll call. Mr. Sackhouse.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thomas. Number 14, consideration action regarding awarding bid number 20-21-3 for converting supplies to cab and chassis to wildland firefighting apparatus for Shawnee Fire Department.
All right, we got two bids back on that project. Wyse Fire and Safety was $85,000, Chief Fire and Safety was $67,567. So, that's a difference of $17,433. Chief, they took no exceptions to our bid spec, so everything matched up, so we're gonna recommend approval of two five.
Chief Fire and Safety for $67,567.
Correct.
What was the name of the other bidder, the high bidder?
Wyse, W-E-I-S, Wyse Fire and Safety.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion and a second, roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a good day. Consideration and action approving emergency management job description. Hi, Mr. Tommy.
Good morning. Now, we got a lead.
Good.
Still, you're still kind of cold.
Here's a copy of a proposed job description for the emergency management position that I talked about for Wyse. It has in here, minimum records, that on minimum requirements, and also preferred requirements for the position.
Okay. And speaking with Tommy and the city of Shawnee, they don't have one in place either, and obviously, we, you know, we've never had one with you, that one, and I know the Hawks have been trying to implement our own, and hazard mitigation plan is now in process, so, but this is just approving a job description. Six months. And that's fat.
Yeah, that last one's good.
Three years, and she normally takes about a year. She's going to expedite it out in six months.
Going up where you get that, everything, right, so back to this year?
Yeah, yeah, uh, no, 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 but I'm, I have a, I called the state last week, no, it was after, it was week before last.
Week before last.
And they said we could wait, they don't normally do that, so I might wouldn't hold my breath, but first, she says she would check on it and get back there.
Eventually she's gonna call.
Basically, at least she'll call, then we'll get approval from you.
That's what's gonna be the hanging out, we'll have to go on there, through communication and all, things like that.
See, and I thought, hazard mitigation plan, and once we had that big plan in place, I thought, wow, this is gonna be easy now, and we just.
They're retired here.
Yeah, it's kind of updated, well, because you've got the base of everything, but it's not, it's not that easy. Still have to go through now, and within the last five years, she has to research and get every flood, windstorm, everything, and then what, location, what dam, how much damage, and then if you've got any, just like working at the river, I should have, if this would have been, it would have been so easy if I'd had that in mind, in our hazard mitigation plan, saying that that was a, that was coming down the pipe, that was then.
You're right, all the crap.
These things you have to make your engine, everybody.
So, I mean, there's more to it. I kind of thought, wow, we just did one better. No, it's not, so I'm okay, great. I think we've got that more than we can handle. So, with that being said, this is just to approve a job description, should we decide to put it back on the agenda to, to put in place an emergency management director? Are there any questions? Comment. So, I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Okay, number 16, discussion regarding family and friends of veterans of Potawatomi County.
Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Veterans, Veterans Day is November the 11th. We have had so much gift and, but yet, no, whatever. I've been in contact with the school board, most of the schools are not having any Veterans Day programs this year due to the COVID. We are going to go ahead and have our Veterans Day program at the park. If it's in Clement, we have also asked for the gym of the old high school to where we can move it inside. And this is a very, very important year for the veterans. Number one, it was a good year, because this is the 75th year of the D-Day of World War II. The bad thing is, it was the beginning of the Korean War. We need to get ahold of these older veterans, get them in, and let them know that they are loved and they're appreciated. Right now, they are feeling forlorn, lost, and they don't know really what to do. So, due to the COVID, we called the state health department, we called our county health department, they've recommended the mask, the hand sanitation, and the social distancing. Well, Mr. Bryce, down at the gym, is going to disinfect the gym for us before and after, make sure that it will be safe for our veterans. Number two, we want to learn the story of these veterans. I've worked with Korean veterans, and have since my husband passed away in 2012. Out of 64 veterans, I have 28 left. We're losing them rapidly. We do not have the history that we need. It's also the same way with the World War II veterans. We need to get these guys out. We need to learn. If you can get them to tell you just one story, that's all we need, because if it's on tape, if it's by memory, somebody can write it down, and we can give it to our history. And I am especially working with the Potawatomi, down towards Ada, I've got veterans that I'm working with, just trying to get the history. And we would love for our city commissioners and our county commissioners to help us to try to get as many veterans out as possible, because we as a community, we don't need city commissioners over here, we don't need county commissioners over here, we've got to pull together. I am not with anyone's organization. I have my own little group, it's called Friends and Families of Veterans Working with Veterans. We work with everybody, not just one group, with everybody. I've got my two little boys here. I told them, I said, I gotta go see the county commissioners, come on, you're going with me. I'm about to make up a copy of the program for the Veterans Day program. It will be at 11 o'clock at the park or in the gym. And like I said, we need to start going together as a group, and not one going here, one going there, we've got to come together. Point number two, our suicide and mental problems we're having in Potawatomi County. Guys, we've got people living in barges, we've got people living in bridges. What I'm asking of you all is not a whole lot, but if any of your workers would see people living under a bridge, in a bar ditch, or under a tree, you don't have to bother, just get ahold of Melissa, he's got my phone number, that way then we can go. That way then we can go, we can possibly see and work. Because if that, we have the winter like they're predicting right now. We're gonna find a lot of suicides, a lot of mental cases laying out on these roads, and they're gonna be dead. And we need to try to stop. We can't stop it all, but we need to try to stop part of it.
Um, I, I don't want to, uh, take a vote right now, we'll put it on next week's agenda, but would it help if we, um, supplied the mask? The mask and.
Right now, Melissa, they're, they're fighting against it, and the reason is, they've gone overseas and stuff and done things, and young kids, they're coming home now, they're old men.
They've seen a lot of worse than the COVID.
They do not accept being in a family situation and put them in a building, they will not sit with their backs to a door. They will not sit with their backs to a window. And if somebody's sitting behind them, you'll notice that they kind of turn to where they can watch what's going on behind them. And, uh, they, they buddy up so close together while they were overseas. Then they come home, it's a whole new ballgame. It's just like, they turned a twenty-year-old kid that we thought were happy-go-lives, now he comes home and he's a grown man. He, he doesn't know how. Because he's, who wants that to, uh, companionship? Being in, uh, military and stuff, that they do not know how to come home, be accepted by anybody. And this is where some of the problem is. Okay, point number three. We have got something that we're wanting to work on, and it's called the Safe House Refuge, Veterans Safe Refuge. What we are going to do, we are going to look and see if there is an empty building anywhere in Potawatomi County that somebody would be willing to work with us. We get volunteers to clean it up, if it's an old building that's been sitting there for a long, long time. What we're wanting to do, we're wanting to get a place where they can socialize. We can eventually get a mental health and a medical clinic in. And also, if there's rooms, like, uh, we've got, uh, veterans going from state to state. Say, for instance, we had a man two years ago, he left the Phoenix, Arizona hospital, they gave him less than a week to live. All he was wanting to do was to get to Mississippi, see his mother and kids. Well, they broke down here in Shawnee. We just had a hard time getting them anything that we could do. But we, Melissa, some of the people in Potawatomi County, they came through, and we got them to Little Rock. The highway patrol traced them from here, cleared through to Little Rock to the veteran hospital. And that's where we lost them, we don't know what happened after that. But, we need something in Shawnee. It doesn't have to belong to any military organization. We are wanting, our senators and congressmen, Inhofe, Cole, Lightford, all. They know about this, and they're all for it. It's just, we're in the beginning plans now, because we've got so many young veterans coming home, they don't know where in the heck they're going to go to get any help. We've got older veterans this Friday PTSD. I have Korean veterans, their wives will call me at two o'clock in the morning, they say, hey, Zona, he's out of control, can you help? I'll stay on the phone with them for whatever it takes. Because they've got some hands to love, but they need. So, like I said, I'll, I'll be, Melissa knows, I'm a pain in her butt. But, uh, I will keep in contact with her. And like I say, if any of your workers or anybody sees anything that might lead to a veteran being out in the cold or anything, let Melissa know, and then she can let me, and then I can get through the group and see what we can find out and what we can do. And like I said, if you know of anybody that's got some old, empty buildings that's been empty for a while, we're considering Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, uh, the Sea, Sea Cadets, ROTC, get them in, get them involved in cleaning up, getting them to help, because this will be getting our new in with our old. So we're, we're not just enabling anybody, but we're getting our community together. We're getting them to pull together and not one here, one there, but one there. We want them all in a circle, and we want the circle in our.
If we can find some, uh, a building, a property, is there federal funding out there for y'all to help?
Uh, that's what we're talking to, uh, Inhofe and Cole and Lightford about, to see what we can do. But like I said, we're just starting baby steps right now to find out what we can do, because we need a place for these guys to go and socialize. Like ours, I don't know, pool table, whatever, our service officer to go and do paperwork on these guys. And it's not just guys anymore, girls, the women are in there too. Believe you me, I hear about the women wholeheartedly. And it's just a whole thing that we need to get into one deal and make Shawnee a prime place that our veterans do care and they come. And that looks number one.
What can we do to help as far as the Veterans Day?
Right now, um, according to the health department, no food, no water, no nothing. So, we've already had hand sanitizer and paper towels and stuff like that donated. So, and Bryce said he would take care of the, uh, disinfecting of the building, uh, on Tuesday night before, and then they would go in and if he had time, he would try to get all those bleachers wiped down in the building. But now if it's outside, uh, we'll still have sanitizing, and we've got ladies making masks, uh, patriotic masks, so there will be masks and everything there that's baby.
Well, now that the CARES Act, you know, money that we received, we went and bought group codes of masks, hand sanitizer. Uh, we've even bought food and the face shield, so we now.
Right now, as far as I know, Melissa, uh, we're really unconcerned because, or we are concerned, because we don't really have any idea of what we're gonna do. Is, is the weather gonna be like it was the last two years, is it the bad you can't get the veterans out? Or is it gonna be so beautiful that everybody comes crapping them? We don't know how to respond. Right now, we're looking at possibly one hundred veterans.
And you said now you have sixty-eight, now is it the sixty-eight twenty-four left that you kind of deal with?
Well, see, back in December of two thousand fourteen, South Korea presented veterans in Oklahoma with a Korean peace medal. We had, uh, a hundred and fifty some from all over the state. Well, Bill Ford, he said, we ain't driving, he quit, got us the bugs, and honey, that was the best time we've had in a long time. You get all of us up there, a cussin' and a raise and thunder, and we had a blast. And it was beautiful, the South Korean government couldn't have been any more gracious of what they were. And to see those guys, they didn't want the certificate, they didn't want this, they didn't want that, they wanted that medal. Because they could grab it and hold it, or see if it went around in a pack. And they had a blast.
Well, you know, when Randy had a good idea, then we were recognizing a veteran once.
Oh, I loved it.
Uh, and so we started doing that, uh, but with the tow bed, we stopped it, just, we didn't know who it'd been.
Well, Bob Mitchell here, he was one of them, he's all honored, and like I said, whenever I need a long tail, I drive them to them, they go with me.
That's good, that's good. Well, no, that, I mean, we will do anything within our legal means to help.
Well, like I said, we just kind of wanted to throw some of these things out here so that when we get up and get over this, and we can go to work it, this way we could bring our, uh, middle school, our high school kids in and get them involved in some of these projects. Because some, I know there's some of them that are on their eagle badges, the girls who want to get their highest award in the town and stuff. And this is our way of making the circle come complete and not move over.
Well, it's good to think that you is their voice.
Oh, honey, thank God for a cell line, our landline and not a cell phone. Uh, like I say, thank you all and everything that you've done. Like I said, when I seen that deal on the, you all honoring the veterans, it amazed me. If and when we can get this proven over with, we want to have a big, uh, a blowout of some kind for all the veterans in Potawatomi County. We had planned one for this year, but it hasn't gone by the way. So, like I said, I spoke my piece, and like I said, oh, okay. Uh, I'm gonna hand you these things on these suicide and mental health field, there's phone numbers and everything on there. If for some reason you can't get ahold of me, make sure you all have these phone numbers so that, uh, you can get ahold of someone. But Melissa, I've got a list of phone numbers, I've got so much to be at home to in Oklahoma City. So if anybody, I don't care who, if they have the lead in front, that they're a homeless person, or if they're a veteran, and they're just not surviving right now. And that's the other way I could put it, when they're living out on a creek bed, uh, and it is cold as it gets, and living under whatever. I, I want to know so we can possibly get somebody to talk to them, just to feel out and see if there's anything we can possibly do. Yeah, I'm gonna let Al explain this mental thing to you, because he's the one that's been working with me on this.
Okay.
Um, I suffered with PTSD since nineteen sixty-four, basically, thirty-three. An aircraft was on me, and, uh, I didn't know what it was till nineteen ninety, found out from a friend of mine, but you got PTSD. I was trying to get help, worked good, uh, finally, a doctor at the veteran hospital picked up on it, and he helped me get some help from the VA. I was in the combat though, that was David's problem, okay? And, uh, the VA on the fourth floor has a program up there that has exercises and homework and guidance on how to deal with your reaction to things now, today. Not what happened, but where you were, okay? It's a wonderful program, and it's helped me a lot. The first customer I went to, the fellow got up there and he says, it's not your fault you got PTSD. This is your challenge, your problem. We can't make it go away, but we can help you deal with it. And it works. It's not like it was years ago, they got up and just talked about everything that happened to them, and no help. Had to go back, you gotta have that homework, you gotta do, so you can end it next week. And then put the stuff on the board, and everybody gets involved in the steps and everything you need to do. The biggest thing, ninety-four percent of the population of the United States don't know what the military is all about, or even if it exists, okay? Or have no way of relating to it. So when they come back from overseas, and you don't have to get in a battle zone, just experience it. Uh, you have nobody to talk to that relates to what you want to talk to them about. So I experienced this one, I was in Valeria, I did an education, oh, it was a little there with the, with the army. And, uh, came back, nobody talked to me. But there are a lot of different people there. This veterans place right here, basically, what we want to do there is to have a place that if you're a veteran and you're feeling down and out, you need to talk to somebody, it's a place for the veterans to go to, play domino cards, take a cup of coffee, just to talk about their experiences. Uh, World War II, it was about a month or two months coming back over on the ship. Everybody on that ship that was in the army in the warfare was part of the ship, they were veterans by themselves. But they did a lot of this, and they found out they weren't alone, okay? And that's the biggest thing about that. You get to the point where what the heck's the use, nobody cared, nobody can relate, twice look around. And we get real good at not letting them know that too. And so that's an neighbor I want to talk to before lunch one day, and, uh, David, I don't know if you remember him?
Yes, yes.
I talked to him at lunch, and I wish he would have said something, if that night he walked off the side of the road. And he was, he was that way, he been, I just let him do all the talking he wanted to do. And a very good friend. That's basically all it is. If they can just talk to somebody about it, but you understand what they're saying and talking about, just let them talk. But there is help, a lot of help for them. President Trump set up this group, and he hired people that were veterans that experienced all this stuff. So when you get in there with those people to relate to what's happening.
Uh, does the, and I, I'm sorry, I could ask a bunch of questions, but does the VW, that building, do they not have little, uh, socializing places?
There's a problem with that and with it.
Uh, there is another group in, in Oklahoma State called the Vets Center. It's not related with the Vets VA Hospital, but I tried them out in nineteen ninety, he's found to get help. It was in the war zone. Well, it was, I was down in human crisis, I don't get the full of this.
Right.
Anyway, um, there's a fellow there that I've been talking to, and we went through this Vets Center thing with him. And he said, that's great, that we have a place where I could have an office out there, where I could talk to the guys and everything. He goes to the VFW now and has a session. And again, if you weren't in a war zone, you can't go there.
Right.
I'm not, I failed again. But the thing I found out is, especially when I went with my friend Bob on a trip to Washington DC, as soon as the vets sat down together, they were talking about each other about different things. And what, all they need is a place where they can go to and just talk with somebody. The fact that I can relate to guys over in Iraq and Afghanistan, that my neighbors just let, but they. just left, but they, oh, they, uh, close, like, annual guard. Said he wanted to stay home with his family now, but, uh, I said, yeah, in Saudi Arabia, we can be walking around, climbing around, it's out over there. Then you sit down, you'll start peeling the orange, opening up your water. There's many days with lights, which you never saw one before, all day long. He said, yeah, I was wondering, do you want to eat your MRE or what's the cost? So, yeah, and several other people like that too. And that's a little vet we can relate to as a situation. And that's what these guys need. I've experienced them back in Saudi Arabia. I wasn't in the military there, but I've been talking to anybody.
So does the VFW not have a little place y'all can socialize and play cards or?
Melissa, the problem with the VFW right now is it is so smoke filled and alcohol. And there are so many that they say, okay, we can go in there. But to socialize and stuff, they need a good cool environment. They don't need, uh, somebody, okay, they walk in, they go to one door and it's locked and they can't get into the hall away from the bar. Well, they have to go around, well, they've got it blocked off. So the question was asked of me, what is the VFW? You can't go in there, but you need to get in there to be a service officer or something that way. And I don't want to go in the bar because I'm a recovering alcoholic. And that's just too much impatient. And that's one reason why I feel like this safe refuge. If we can get something done. I'm not putting the VFW down because they do a lot of fantastic work. But that is one of the biggest complaints is the smoke and the alcohol.
So there's nowhere as of right now that these guys or gals can get together and sit. So if there was a place that, and I, once a month, that they could come and sit and visit and?
Well, once a month to get it started and then if we've got it going and got it rolling, uh, have like a family dinner where the veterans and the families can mix and mingle. And get the lives, the kids get to know what their dads and men and women's gone through. Where we can get them to realize exactly. Because back with Charles and them was, I think, Korea, World War II. It wasn't PTSD, it was pure old shell shock. And that's all you heard. Well, my husband died in two thousand and twelve and it was two thousand and five when I found out that he had PTSD. He didn't have self kill thoughts, he had PTSD. And he was violent. We learned, we had to tie him, but he went into his seizures. We'd have to tie him up and bed shoes if he couldn't hurt himself. So all we're wanting to do is get a good, safe place for families, children, veterans to go. Where they can socialize and maybe once a month, all the families and kids get together with a staff. But if we can get it arranged, get it to work, do a three day a week. Let it be known that the veterans can go down there and get less their hair down. That's what will work. But like I said, this is just the beginning and it may be steps and it's gonna take a while to get it. And what we were looking at was maybe finding somebody that's had a building that's in fairly good shape. That might be possible that we could, uh, they would even donate it and let us keep the up, the up utilities and stuff like that for them. Which, you know, that's something that's gonna have to be worked out too. But if they would write it off as a tax write-off or something and let us have it with no rent for a while, where we get on our people going. That would be one of the biggest accomplishments we would talk. I'm seventy-eight years old, Brian, and the veterans are hard.
Well, let's, uh, let's, let us make a few phone calls.
Well, like I said, this is just the beginning, Melissa, and guys, all we want to do is get some of these homeless people off of the street, get them to work. They can feel comfortable within themselves because that's where the biggest problem is right now. We're not comfortable with ourselves.
All right. I've got a few ideas, but let me toss them over and?
Well, like I said, you know where I'm at.
I do.
I'm out there on cotton tail running the road crazy.
I know, you don't drive no one crazy.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, pardon me? I was gonna say, I was gonna ask you, how do you like that stuff, son?
It's great, but they turned it, it's just all, turned it back.
Yeah, he should've went out there this morning.
Yeah, he was.
Okay, good, good, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, uh, my heart goes out to you two and you three and everyone else.
Well, like I said, Melissa, it's, um, ever since February, it's been a nightmare ahead. Trying to work and get things done and trying to get some of the veterans what they need. Now, we do have a veterans food pantry at the American Legion. It is not associated with the American Legion, but it is a food pantry of emergency for veterans.
Okay.
So, uh, I'm gonna be working on it right now, trying to get stuff in like juice and, uh, things that they can open the cans with the microwave and be edible.
All right, well, I'll just make a few phone calls and I'll be getting back with you.
Okay, well, like I said, well, my little group, my little sister in crime. I, when I seen Jamie McGraw and Gomacoff were coming together, I said, oh my God, look out, the two sisters are on more.
Look out, we're in trouble. Thanks, guys.
Thank y'all so much. Again, thank you very much.
Uh, number seventeen, consideration action regarding approval of OMMA policy and figured. I'll go with that then. We'll have to skip on that.
Melissa, we'll see you all later.
Okay.
Y'all can say.
Always.
Keep in touch with me and I'll keep in touch with you.
I'll put a six foot pole before this.
Uh, number eighteen, consideration action regarding approving OMMA certificates of compliance for Cedar Hill Grove, Cushing Ridge, Rural Family Farms, Grove Pharmaceuticals, Spring Brook Nursery and Seldom Rest Farm.
So, back to the law.
Okay. So there's two and threes, two and twos, and three and one. That stands out, right?
There's six, but there's one application or there's one group that did two separate applications. Cause they're two different, that's why you're signing separate names.
Yeah, it's at one of our, there's a park.
There was a park in, like, a thunder or something.
That in District Three?
Yeah.
So these two are the same people?
Yeah.
Yeah, the same people, but they have two different types of people.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's the, uh, yeah, the core farm, family farm.
Okay, you're gonna have to explain to me, those are both growers.
From what I understood, both new applications. From what I understood, um, Rudy said that one was like, one was a grower and one was a spinster. Everything looked the exact same to me on the application, so that's why I asked her about it and that's what she explained that.
A transporter?
Grower and transporter. And that was just grower. That one probably took accident one.
Okay.
Um, that was probably transporter, that one was a grower, it's the same farm.
And they, uh, two separate tracks that I was.
All right, Mr. Thomas made a motion.
And a second real call.
Mr. Blackout?
Miss Ma.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? Public comment?
Yeah, um, you guys already answered a couple of them. Um, I didn't realize that was on the agenda, that emergency manager. I was curious, you know, that was all the work since Don ran both jobs. And, uh, although I've seen him run, that is great from the application, I know that's his job. Um, but we're supposed to have two, one for one for town and one for Shawnee. And since we have an interim, and we had an interim emergency manager, but apparently Chief Foster and what have Shawnee. Um, I'm assuming that Chief Wilson and now the actual interim is in here to be, uh, will y'all run the, y'all do the same thing as for, uh, any of the deputy, uh, second to the.
What, what has always happened in the past is we're not required, we have one at the county. Um, and I don't know what the city's requirements are, uh, but in the past, Don did serve as both city and the county. And, uh, then when he, uh, left, uh, Mr. Foster came on and he kind of just stepped in and still served as the city and the county. Uh, and we had talked for several years whether we wanted, needed to hire our own. The problem with that is, is county doesn't have a, a lot of money. And in order to get a really good emergency management person, the salary has to.
That's a lot of.
It's, it has to be a lot more than what at that time we could offer. Uh, so when Mr. Foster left, uh, yes, Chief Wilson kind of has stepped into that role. Uh, it's my understanding that they are in process of doing an interview to hire one, I think.
Yeah, I know the job listing, apparently those are closed.
Okay.
They must at least have the interview.
Sure, and, and I don't, I don't know who, where, when or why, I mean, but with that thought process going, we figured it would probably be a good time now, if we choose to do that, to check into hiring, uh, and our own. And then they just work, you know, compatible with the city of Shawnee. That way, it's not one person having to take their, jump on both bandwagons.
Boy, I don't know, some people probably can handle it.
It's a big job.
That would be quite good.
It's a big job, there's certifications that you have to have. Uh, and with the certi, when someone goes to that type of schooling to get those certifications, you can't offer them twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year, you know, it's just not fair to them. And so that is actually probably the main reason why we've never went out on our own. And I hope I can speak to these two, why we've never went out on our own and claimed our own emergency management director. So, one, Don did a, you know, a good job and two, we just didn't have the money. And not that we really have all that money now either, but, uh, that's why it's taken us a little bit, kind of setting, what will the job requirement be? What is the, what, what will we be able to depend on the city for that maybe when we hire somebody, they don't have that certification, you know? So that's just trying to what we're kind of rolling around in our head.
On the draft that, that you brought in, would you mind if I had a copy of that?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
I'm just curious what it is versus, versus Shawnee.
And that, no, that is, of course, that is what we approved today. Uh, and that is a draft that, you know, we could come back for the board and some of those things, we change the draft.
Um, it gives me, it gives me a good, a good idea.
And that's just kind of a first step. Um, have we put out, have we decided we're gonna hire one? No, have we put out for applications? No, so that basically is kind of our first step to say, as a board, if we hire one, this is what the job description will include. Therefore, how much can we afford, how much do they deserve, you know? So that's kind of my first step. But thanks for asking and being interested.
That's all I had, just worked up, which I had, actually had it on the.
I hadn't, I hadn't seen you yet and congratulations on your nomination, I do, top county.
Oh!
Top county, top, top ten, top.
Top ten, thank you. That was an honor, a much honor and I, it was a surprise. Um, when I win, I actually wasn't gonna go. And I was, I would've better come, but now I know why. So, but yes, thank you for acknowledging that. All right, I was gonna let you know, I did look up the statute as far as the entry that's got it. And it does begin on January third and it's based on what the population is. Okay, all right, I, I, I thought it was, and, but see, they changed that law. Two or three times.
Yeah, because at one time, we could do it immediately.
Right, right.
We could go back.
But with the, uh, state, uh, whether it's Grady County situation, man, I, I don't want to do anything until, yeah, it's, it's. Okay, all right. Um, and you've got a copy of the resolution and all that, so.
Yeah, do you want me to work on that?
If you, well, no, that's the resolution we will approve. Uh, but if you would just look at the amount and the formula based on the statute, just make sure we're within, you know, the law. I mean, we don't, I'm pretty sure the formula's fine. Uh, and I know the resolution will be fine, it's according to fine, but I just, yeah, I'd like someone to say thumbs up. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. All right, thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration action regarding purchase orders and claims. Did I look at those?
You have a problem with the.
All right.
I'll make a motion, remember, that first order, the thing, I'll say.
Rural call, Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Just standing, yes, ma'am. And a motion and a second rural call.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thomas? Just standing, yes, ma'am.